I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Temporary Secretary, can I have the roll call please?
Yes. Pam Merle.
Here.
Dan Bogarty.
Here.
TJ McGlaughlin.
Here.
Kevin Frost.
Here.
Darryl Lewandowski.
Here.
Bart Kahn.
Here.
Robert Rizzo.
Here.
Okay. One percent, okay. Election of officers. Do we have to do this today? Like if we elect the secretary day, does he have to start, or she have to start? Well, gonna be he start today, or can they wait until like the next one?
They would start anyway.
Okay. Election of officers. We need a volunteer. The secretary.
I'll make a motion. To retain Pam Merle for chair and Dan.
No, just secretary.
Oh, just secretary?
Just secretary.
Well, you've got the plural on officers.
Officer.
Officer, okay. Well, I can't even remember who I proposed last month what it was. It was Rizzo. I, that's who I'm proposing, Rizzo to be secretary.
That's just for this evening?
No, that's for the rest of the year, rest of the year.
I'm saying just for the evening.
I nominate Kevin. He's the new guy in the block.
Baptism by fire, Kevin Frost.
It's not a big deal.
Are you up for that? That's the evening.
I'm up for that.
All right, thank you. Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll withdraw my nomination and I'll second one that you have.
Okay, so Dan. Darryl, second. Okay, can we do a roll call vote? For the election of officers being Kevin for secretary, Kevin Frost.
Roll call, Pam Merle.
Yes.
Dan Bogarty.
Yes.
TJ McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Kevin Frost.
Yes.
Darryl Lewandowski.
Yes.
Bart Kahn.
Yes.
Robert Rizzo, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second the motion. The motion.
Dan. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, we can say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, none, the agenda passes. Public comment, Ms. Hamilton.
I hope tonight when we get to Kelo's application, that you all have read the report, those of us in the audience who are interested have read the report, that we don't have to have it regurgitated by our consultant, that instead of asking him to verbalize what he's already written, that we just go on the record saying they want an office expansion, are there any questions on this report and if he can answer questions, instead of summarizing what we've all already read, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Chairperson comment. I, I'm just gonna say I agree with Linda on some of these things, some of these things I like for the consultant, she kind of give an overview for the public, but I think this one is so fairly simple, I don't think we need it for everything. He's read the report, I'm sure. Yeah, it's, it was easy. Okay, new business items, Kelo Office Addition Site Plan Amendment. All right. Yep, yep, I think this was easy, we need to move on.
Yeah, it was, I agree.
Okay. One second, item missing. Does anyone have any questions? In regards to the engineering report? Concerns? Okay. Any questions for Paul? Okay. Um, this, this is the first time this has come in front of us, right? And the building's almost done?
No, it's not all, it's about halfway maybe, just the outside done, not the inside.
Okay. And it looks like it's, it's pretty simple, they have a checklist of things to do in regards to lighting and then the engineering standards, so.
Concerns about the stormwater calculations that the township engineer identified. The township engineer did indicate that it was something that they felt could be worked out administratively between the town engineer themselves, so.
Okay.
We did note that if they are proposing any lighting, that does need to be added to the plan.
Can I get this?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, do we have?
Also in regard to that letter, the pond is within a week of being, the point where that punch list is done too, like I think they're just straw on it and some minor other things, the wheel wash has already been up and running for months, so.
Okay.
I think most of that punch list is taken care of.
Well, that was, that was separate, that was separate, we never discussed the building before, so. And it said, it said some of these things should, need to come to the township to make sure they're all right and good, that's, you know, that's what your neighbors expect, that's what the community expects, so hopefully next time we'll put the permit before the, before the building. Do we have a motion? To move forward on this, one way or another? Did you have any question? Oh, okay, great. It was to approve the site plan.
Yeah.
With the conditions that they meet the lighting requirements in the planner's report and the engineering standards and the engineer's report, Stan Tex report.
Make the motion to to go ahead with the approval of the accessory building ordinance.
Not accessory building, sorry.
The office addition site plan amendment.
Yeah, there we go, sorry.
The office addition site plan amendment. And with all the recommendations of planner, planning, planner and the engineer Stanton.
Okay. Do we have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Can we have a roll call vote? To approve the Kelo Office Addition Site Plan Amendment that's conditional upon meeting all the planning requirements, as well as all the requirements from the engineering report? So, roll call, so you'll call through all the, you just call the name.
Mr. Rizzo? Yep, we're gonna take a roll call.
He's gonna do the roll call if he's ready.
Okay, that's right, all right. Yes, yes, yes. Bart?
Yes.
Darryl?
Yes.
TJ?
Yes.
Kevin Frost, yes. Pam?
Yes.
And Daniel?
Yes.
Okay. Right. So that. Okay, next item, whole business items, accessory building ordinance, more discussion. I, I asked Paul to bring this back. I had, I had second thoughts in regarding. Did I lose my paper here? In regarding the, the limits on the number of buildings, I know last time we had a discussion and it just got so complicated and so long. But I think we should have something that's reasonable and fair, and by not having some sort of limit, they don't have to be tight, but I think if we don't have some sort of limit, then that invites the extremes. So I just wanted to bring that up for discussion. Kevin, just to get you updated, I'm sure you read the accessory use building structures. The reason this came up is because the numbers were so, were so tight, the limits on the number of accessory uses, that it just wasn't reasonable for the community, so we wanted to review the whole ordinance, which we did, we came up with some good ideas, our last discussion, if you can see on this form right here, this is what the limits were, and it was just unreasonable and it wasn't fitting the community and nobody was following the standards because it was unreasonable. So, we, Paul just created another table, any, any update, if we wanna discuss that and either make changes to it, and that's what we're here to do. We can change those numbers or not include the table, that's what the agenda item is.
This is the new?
It's, it's just, right, it's Paul's suggestion of what happens in, in other communities and trying to create something that's reasonable for Salem, and our last discussion was, we didn't need any limits on it, but I think the more I thought about it in, in what goes in general, I just kind of had a little fires remorse, so I wanted to bring it up again to see what you guys thought, I didn't know if you felt the same way, or you want to stick with what we did, so. Yeah.
Just for clarification, the, the table on the first page is, is the example from another community, currently we limit the maximum number of accessory, accessory units to two, no matter what the size of the parcel.
Oh, okay.
So that was, what was determined was too low.
Right.
I brought this as an example from another community, the table at the bottom is, was a suggestion of something that you could do as a starting point for your discussion.
Okay.
So the one on the first page is an example, the second table shows the zoning districts that we have here in Salem.
Right.
And then the third table was an example or a suggestion of what you might wanna do, at least as a starting point.
Okay.
And it doesn't even have to have as many categories, you know, you could do one acre, you could do over two, that kind of thing.
And Kevin, just one more point, is the troubles that we were running into was Salem is pretty diverse, from, they have one rule fit all, we've got the hamlet, we've got two acres, we've got one acre, we've got half acre, you know, you can't have one rule to fit everybody, just didn't make sense, we've got the agricultural community, so that's where we were. TJ, do you have any, any thoughts?
Do we have something written down about the, this over 10 acres based on lot coverage? I mean, is there something already that has been, you know, shown in the past or other communities use it like that? Because we'd have to have that in our, you know, our zoning ordinances.
I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand.
Where the, it says over 10 acres, this is the suggestion for possible number of accessory structures, so it says based on lot coverage, so what does that mean exactly?
10% is the maximum lot coverage.
Okay. Current, currently, right? And that's kind of standard.
Correct.
Okay. Does this, does this include agriculture, but they're just, they're exempt from everything, right?
So, a bona fide farm.
Right.
The structures on the farm would be part of that farm operation, so they wouldn't be accessories, they would be part of the principal use.
Got it.
What's a bona fide farm?
An actual farming operation as, as defined by the Right to Farm Act. That's the way it's defined in your zoning ordinance.
Okay, so.
Let Dan's guy's hand up here, so.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Dan.
Question for you, Paul, when they put up an accessory building, they usually go and get a permit.
Correct.
So at that time they could get approval for what they want to put up, from the township, okay, because some properties are irregular and they border several properties, and they're not that big. For them putting up accessory buildings next to some of those properties that they're right up against, with a small part of their land, might be a different application than somebody that has a rectangular property and can isolate the accessory building, even so if you're gonna go by acreage, then those two things are two different applications.
So you also have setback regulations that
Right.
that deal with that particular issue, so those would still be in place, you'd still have to meet setback regulations.
Right, right. Yeah.
Or, or if they, if they, if they just meet the setback, you know, it still could potentially present some problems with the neighbors, you know, I, I think it's better to leave it up to the township, in that way they can assess each application as it comes, why not do it that way?
Leave what up to the township?
Yeah.
Whether the building is gonna get a permit?
There's height requirements, there's roof pitch requirements.
Well, that's why the township, and the township has all of that.
So, Dan, there, there do need to be parameters for the zoning administrator to make these decisions, it can't just be a good idea, bad idea zoning administrator decision.
You have parameters, the township is gonna make a decision based on the parameters and the location of the property. I, I don't see any problem with that. That takes away all the variables. And in this township right now, the applications in this township, any kind of rules you put in on an accessory building in this township, is gonna cause some stomach problems for some people.
So, right, so we have the, we have the existing parameters, and those parameters say that you can only have two of them.
Right.
So that's why this discussion came, came forward and why we're proposing changes, is because it was determined that two was too few.
I think.
In some circumstances, and so that's, I guess I'm not understanding what, what your direction is for, for the change.
Okay, somebody's got an acre and a half, they wanna have four, is that okay?
Well, that's what we're here, that's what we're here to discuss, this chart right here.
I just think different properties. You start trying to get a finite definition of what people can have, that's where you're running into a lot of problems, especially in this township, because it's all over the, it's all over the board, it's, it's not, you know, that, I, you're gonna make a lot of unhappy people, that's all I'll say, I, you know, that's, that's my concern. You start putting restrictions on what they can have on their property, you're gonna have a lot of unhappy people, I guarantee it, that's all I got to say there.
Yeah, I think we're trying to loosen some of the restrictions, Dan, and I think it's gonna cause the township a problem if we leave it up to one person to say, oh yes, this fits in your backyard, but it doesn't fit in your backyard, because I said so, so we have to stay out of our yard, so if we, if we have some, what we're trying to do is create something that's reasonable and fair, and if it doesn't fit, they can go to the ZVA or something.
Let's get back to what is the measurable here, measurable.
Right.
What are we trying to prevent, or what are we trying to permit, and go head to head on that, is it really four buildings, or is it eyesore, or is it, you know, whatever, some, some guy looking on his porch under his neighbor's property, he doesn't like that, is that what we're trying to combat, and is it really measurable in the number of buildings? If a guy puts four buildings 100 feet into his property, do I care? If he puts 50 pink buildings 30 feet from his boundary, do I care? I mean, that's, that's what we got.
And that's what I think, is there's some extreme circumstances that I don't, I, I don't wanna fight the extremes, but I think if we don't have some sort of guide of general reasonableness, we are gonna, we, it's just to weed out the extremes, that's what I'm thinking.
The extremes that are doing what?
Yeah.
The extremes that are doing what, what is the measurable, and I'm gonna keep on asking this question every time this comes up, what is the measurable that we're trying to go after? And why are we fighting it with the number of buildings?
Because I think when you have 10 cargo or 15 cargo containers, because your business in Westland was shut down and you decide to move all your stuff over on Curry Road, it doesn't make the neighbors happy, and if there's nothing the township can do about it, then what Dan says, you're angry, so if we have some sort of limits that say, okay, if you're on this many acres, you can have so many cargo containers, or you can have a gazebo, a garage, a tool shed, a pool, a pool house and a pole barn, and something that's, that's reasonable, if you want anything beyond that, go to, go to the ZVA. But if we have no limits, I think that's.
It's because the neighbor can see it. It's because the neighbor can see it that it's a problem, it's not the fact that it exists, it's the problem that the neighbor can see it.
Well, if it didn't exist, they couldn't see it.
What? Okay, yes, and, yeah, and justifies means, so. It's the problem that the neighbor can see it and the neighbor doesn't like it, it's not the problem that they exist.
I think a part of it is, is keeping up with, with a, with a basic level of standards for our community, the aesthetics of the community.
Okay.
If you got a gazillion pink cargo containers out there that you, that people can see through their backyard.
And they're considered separate buildings, it's not the fact that it's cargo, you were saying that they got 15 of them.
They're all separate buildings.
Okay, I go out there with my stick welder and I weld them all together, they're now one structure, I now have one building, it has seven, 15 different doors on it, but it's now one structure, now, now what do you do?
Well, you still have, what's that? You've got lot coverage and you've got all the dimensional standards to meet.
Coverage exists no matter what, if they're doing it beyond lot.
And you can't weld them together, well, you can weld them together, but you have to put a, put it on a, put it on a pad, if you're gonna use it as a building, then treat it as a building.
And, and residents have to know also though, like you said, the ZVA, they'd always go to the ZVA if they want more buildings, when they do go to the ZVA though, the neighbors do have input at that point, because I believe through the ZVA they gotta send their application to so many neighbors, so many feet, so the neighbors will kind of have at that point a say whether they want the building or not, the proposed building or not.
So the neighbors can ask questions, they can pose concerns, but ultimately it's up to the members of the zoning board of appeals to make a decision based on the very specific findings that are in the zoning ordinance, they make their decision based on six findings, and one of them is practical difficulty, so if you can't demonstrate that you have a practical difficulty, it would prevent you from meeting the letter of the ordinance, and would deprive you somehow of the use of your land that other people in the district who maybe don't have that practical difficulty would enjoy, then you can grant a variance. So in other words, if there are odd shaped parcels, topographical issues, wetland issues, those kind of things that prevent you from being able to have, say, an accessory detached garage or an attached garage to your home, and you can't meet the setbacks, or you can't meet the lot coverage because of some of these practical difficulties, then the ZVA can grant you variance, it's not just, you know, a vote of the neighbors. But certainly the neighbors do have the opportunity to.
Yes, because I have seen situations where townships or cities were ready to approve a, a variance, but enough neighbors came through and said, we don't want that here, and that's the way it went, so I'm just saying that.
I'm not saying the ZVA members aren't subject to popular.
That's, that's a whole other story.
That's a different story, but if, if the ZVA members are doing their job appropriately, they're looking at those findings, they're making the decision based on those findings, the input from the neighbors can help them understand the situation better, but it's really not a vote of the neighbors by any means.
Okay.
It should not be.
All right, thank you.
Well, just one person, my opinion, I, I still think we should have a chart of reasonableness and fairness to eliminate the extremes, I would up the numbers that are on there. I think they're too low, I give, I think that gives people some flexibility, some flexibility by upping the numbers. That's my opinion on the chart.
Paul, could you please read, read off the list examples of auxiliary buildings or accessory buildings, examples?
Examples of what accessory?
Of what accessory buildings are.
So I can, I can read you the definition of the accessory building.
Is it on page one?
It's in the definition section, it is on page one of your, of your memo that was provided last time. Structure which is clearly incidental to customarily found in connection with subordinate to and is located on the same zoning lot as the principal use to which it is exclusively related, accessory structure shall not include dwellings or be used for residential or lodging purposes or sleeping quarters for human beings, so it's essentially garages, pole barns, sheds, gazebos, pool houses, those kinds of, those kinds of accessory structures.
Guy in the hamlet who has a detached garage, you know, on a baby offset river detached garages, who has a gazebo out there by his above ground pool, has two, and maybe that's where he ends up, and we say, no, sorry, you can't have a pool house. So this guy has to apply for some sort of variance maybe to go against the zoning, pay so much, so many hundreds of dollars to come in here and apply for it, so he can put up a $200 change house.
Well, that's why I said.
Or he can attach his garage with a roof, therefore it becomes attached, doesn't become detached, and he puts the dang thing up anyway, and the neighbor now gets to look at another one, he's found a way to default it.
So sometimes there are opportunities to, to, to work around that issue, if you will, or to find a creative solution to, to that, but, but the, I would suggest that going, going for a variance is not just because you want another structure, if, if we found, and we did a number of years ago, that the same variance requests were coming to the ZVA over and over again, we took the ordinance and amended the ordinance to be more reasonable to allow for what people kept getting variances granted for, so we, we don't want the variance.
You're gonna refund their money?
No.
No. Okay.
We need to, we need to address it where it's measured, if it's because of an eyesore.
Well, Bart, we can't measure everything, we can't make this perfect.
Exactly.
Right, so we're, I suggest.
So you're making it for one guy, not for the majority?
No, we are making it for the majority, and we got the one guy that wants to do something oddball because it's, maybe because his, his house is set way back and he's got all his acreage up front, and he's got a bunch of woods, and he needs to put a pole barn out front, you know, that, that kind of stuff.
That's, that's.
But what I said, but you're talking about, well, and, so I, I suggest we, we up the numbers from what, what this is, how many, how many, what's reasonable, what's gonna give somebody enough cushion where they can do what they want with it, with, to eliminate the extremes? to eliminate the extremes?
Okay, so then let's bring in data that says what...
We don't have data for that.
So you're guessing at what is reasonable?
Yes. I mean, I hate to say that, but we, I mean, how are you gonna find the number?
It's something you say, Pam, that's fine.
So, but I mean, you have, so the answer is no rules?
If my neighbor wanted...
What's the answer, Bart? You're bringing up this extreme, this extreme number, or this extreme lack, not having a number, or looking for data. What is the answer? What direction do we go? Because this is the third time we've talked about it, I don't wanna talk about it anymore.
It's how much water does this hold, and I say two feet. Two feet is not a measure of...
Okay, well, look at the chart, look at the chart that Paul gave us last month and this month, and it says, under one acre, two, three, four, you go down, it's a guide, it's a general. Does two seem reasonable? No, because if somebody over here in the hamlet, I can see where they'd wanna put up a gazebo, if they, or if they had a detached garage, well, then they're gonna wanna a tool shed too, to be able to put that in there. So what's reasonable? If I'm not being reasonable, then tell me, what do we need to do, where is it?
And if it's to protect against what the neighbor does not like to see, how do you measure that number?
How do you measure aesthetics?
Thank you.
That's what we're trying to mend. And yet, you're not gonna find an answer, so the answer is nothing?
I attach a gazebo, a pool house, I attach my garage, I can now add one more, and now I sit there and say, "Okay, I'm gonna put the biggest building I want on my property, up to 10% coverage and paint it bright pink, and I'm within conformance, but I'm still taking off my neighbor."
Well, I don't know how to answer that. I don't know how to answer that. So, does anybody else have anything on the chart, about the chart? Let's get this chart out of the way.
I can't see under two, under an acre going for more buildings. Because I can't visualize across the street here in the hamlet going to three or four buildings. I don't know. That is not a big enough spot for all that, with the house and the garage and what have you.
I just upped them all three, four, five, and six. It's just a suggestion. I don't, I'm not a planner, I don't, Paul gave this other page as a suggestion. The purpose of limiting it is to weed out the extremes.
For the purpose of, I'm gonna ask why five times.
Okay.
Can I take a shot at answering this question?
Yes.
So you have a master plan that's a community-driven document that has goals and policies within it, and you use that master plan then to create the rules that go into the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is the law, the master plan is the policy. From your master plan, you have a number of policies like preserving open space, preserving the rural character, limiting visual clutter, protecting the aesthetics of the environment, right? Okay, so those are goals, right? And so then your job as a planning commission is to say, how do those goals then translate? One of the things is limiting the number of structures to avoid, let me finish, to avoid the clutter of having, you know, dozens and dozens of, like you said, you made the example, what if I wanna put up twenty dog houses? Nobody wants to see that. So you may be an outlier in terms of what you can or can't tolerate in terms of what you'd like to see. The ordinance, the suggested language here, and frankly, what you had in your ordinance, is consistent with what planning practices have been, and that's based on standards that people have used many, many times. So this is a tool that has been used to try to exact that goal of having less visual clutter, protecting the kind of aesthetics and the character of the community. And so this is the tool that you're using. So that's the answer to the question that you keep asking. If you don't think that that's a worthy goal...
Yes, because what I see is the flaw, going from the policy of a plan to the, this is how we put this plan in effect, is by the number of buildings. It's that bridge that I don't understand. I can't walk across it. Someone somewhere determined that, oh, to do this, you have to limit the number of buildings. I'm gonna say why? Because instead of maybe putting my farm implements into a building, now I can't put up a building, can't afford a building, whatever, and they just sit out and the grass grows around them. You know...
Two things, Pam. Number one, what was provided to the public online did not include this table you guys keep referencing. Can we get a copy of it right now, what you discussed?
Yes.
Number two...
It was from, it's from last month.
Okay, I thought, I'll go back and look it up then.
We can get you a copy.
Okay, I'll go back and look it up. The other point, though, to what Bart is saying, right now, if you put up a shed of a certain size, it doesn't come under the accessory, it doesn't require a type of approval. So if you build something that's less than 10 foot by 10 foot, and if you don't address what Bart is telling you, and we're not reasonable, people are gonna be able to go in and put a bunch of little, this is for my lawnmower, this is for plowing the snow, this is for my garden tools, and then you will have a lot of little buildings, because I can't build the building I really need. And for, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with Mr. Lewandowski. Right now in the hamlet, we are hampering people's ability to store things. Because if you have a detached garage, you're being told, "You can't have another building, you can't have a gazebo, you can't have anything under your current ordinance." I shared that last meeting. So I think you do need something that's more reasonable for people. Again, do you want a bunch in your neighborhood? And what this is really about is I own property, and you wanna tell me, and I don't disagree that there have to be some rules, but you wanna tell me what I can do on my property that I pay for, that I pay the taxes on, because you might look at it. If you wanna control my property to some extent, why don't you buy it from me? Everything is for sale if the price is right. And so I agree with Pam, you have to have something for extremes, because someone's gonna push you out a little. But it better be reasonable, or people are gonna build a bunch of small things because they can.
Right, and that's what we're, that is what we're here to discuss. You know, Paul threw out some numbers, Daryl threw out some numbers. I disagree with Daryl, I think we need to have a few more, because if I was in the hamlet and I had a detached garage and I wanted a gazebo, I would also definitely want a tool shed to put my lawnmower in and all that kind of stuff, because it's most likely they're on a small lot, they've got a small garage, they probably can't fit anything in it. I think we need to make something, and that's my point. Bart, I understand what you're saying, but I can't find an answer for you, and I probably never will. So what are we gonna do with this? That's my question.
If it's all, and the trouble is, it becomes subjective.
It does.
But so we're trying to go from the objective to the subjective, and subjective back to objective.
We're just going to subjective to better subjective.
And you know, we started out with, you know, something we were calling a blight ordinance, and then it went into, well, really, it's not for blight, it's for eyesore.
Okay, let's stick to this.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean... I mean, if you wanna put 10 on one acre, fine, I'm in.
Right, well, 10 is ridiculous, because you can't fit 10 within the 10% range, but...
But see, the idea of being able to say 10 is ridiculous comes from just an opinion. I mean, maybe, do we know how many buildings are out there in the hamlet right now on people's property?
If you're talking like 10 dog houses, you know, 10 little dog houses or something like that, that is exactly why we're trying to create something reasonable.
Like I said, a doghouse doesn't count because it's below 200 feet.
So just for point clarification, under 200 feet does not require a building permit, but it's still considered an accessory structure.
There you go.
Okay.
Part of the problem is in Salem Township, you have people that have lots of acreage, you have people that have two acres, five acres, 100 acres, 50 acres, then you got the hamlets, then you have subdivisions with HOAs, so it's really quite complex.
Well, and so unfortunately, that is part of the task that you were all charged with as appointed officials, is to try to take those policies and enact them into legislation that then exacts what you're trying to get to. And so, yes, we don't always have it exactly right. That's why a zoning ordinance is kind of a living document. You have the ability to make these changes. And so, we made a change before, and it's clear that that's not right, so we're trying to amend it again. And maybe we won't get it perfect this next time, but I think that...
We will need to change it again.
Yeah, but I think the work you're doing right now is to try to decide, what is that right number, what is your best foot forward? And so you have an opportunity here to, you know, to discuss what the appropriate numbers are, and I know you feel like, you know, Bart, you may be on the outside saying that you don't care, it doesn't bother you at all.
It's not this specific thing, it's a repeating of the, take it head-on where it is.
But unless we have another answer, I really, I don't know. I wanna hear from Kevin.
Sure.
Kevin, what do you have to say?
Well, I have...
Welcome to the party, Kevin.
I'm in the hamlet, I have two and a half acres, I have two garages and a gazebo. So that would go under three. If I wanna put another garage or a tool shed, I think the numbers are too low, but do we really, if we need numbers, I think we should raise them. Because, I mean, like, you get a person five to 10 acres. If they have a pole barn, they might wanna put another pole barn, because maybe they do a little bit of farming on that 10 acres. Maybe they work on cars, so they need another garage. And the next thing you know, they got a gazebo with their built-in pole.
A doghouse is considered an accessory building. I have two pole barns and a detached garage. I have two pole barns and a detached garage. I get a dog, and I put a doghouse out there. Someone comes and knocks on my door and says, "You're against the township ordinance." Tear something now.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna move this forward a little bit, and I would like to hear some suggestions on this lot size. Like, I just put a number in and ran them up, but then I ran into trouble because, you know, getting five to 10 acres and, you know... I think under one acre, two is too low. It could be three, it could be four, I don't care.
Do many communities go...
What, I'm looking for some feedback as to why these numbers would be either good or bad.
Why couldn't we put five? Because it might be one acre, but this guy, he might want a couple sheds for his things. I mean, do we have to put numbers down here? I mean, is this...
Well, that was kind of our discussion, because part of what Paul was talking about was to, in our master plan, with, you know, to promote urban spaces, agricultural community, to limit clutter for people in the hamlet. There is, there is a house, a Pontiac Trail, that I think has five of those plastic sheds right now. Yeah, canopy kind of things. And they're all kind of like there. I don't know what's under there or what's in there, it's not my business, but those are the kind of things that if you're next door, is that what you wanna look at? And what the problem running to is, sometimes people keep their things all nice and neat as a pin, and others, not, but, so that's where you gotta strike a balance, there's, you know...
Can you run into problems when you start telling people what they can put on their property?
Well, we do it through a whole book.
Right.
No, I mean, I mean, it's just...
Well, if people don't like that, then their option is to come to public input meetings for master plans, or frankly, they can vote. And put in different policy makers if that's something that, I mean, this, what you all do is a product of the people who put you in power to do this, so...
The hard part is, none of us really want any of these rules, but what we've seen in our community, we're trying to help promote our master plan and the vision of that master. And when you don't have any rules, or there are no guides, so to speak, then things get a little crazy. And we're trying to avoid the craze.
What we're trying to do, we're just looking for, maybe, we're just looking for a guide.
A reasonable, well, it's gonna be a rule. But there's a way to go around it, but it's gonna cost people stuff. So that's why we don't, that's why this two buildings on the first, well, whatever it is now, it's two, is crazy.
Yeah, on one acre.
So you could also combine some of these numbers in the table. So it might be under one acre is something, and then one to 10 acres is something else, and then over 10 acres is different. You don't have to have these broken down into five different categories. Like, if you decide that the appropriate, a reasonable number of accessory structures for people to have is, say, five or six, because you think that somebody could have a detached garage, somebody could have a pole barn, somebody could have a gazebo and a pool house, and then one extra just for good measure. So maybe you say five is a reasonable number for any person to have as an accessory to a residential use, because this is what we're talking about. Residence is the primary use. It's not tinker garage, not farm, not landscape business. This is a residential use with accessory structures that are clearly incidental to that use.
I personally like the different areas, because that's what we have. And when we lump things together, that's when people get mad. They say, "My situation," but that's not my situation, so I kind of like the table the way it is. I can see up into four, five, six, and seven, or something like that. I don't know, I know it's arbitrary, I know Bart's mad, sorry.
You're not mad at all.
Disagree.
Please, please don't misconstrue intensity with anger. They're very different, they're very different. We are not fighting this where the fight is. You mainly brought it to things laying out in tarp's covering, and brought it into sight and appeal from a neighbor, not the number of buildings, just now.
But it's all of that, but it's all of that.
Right!
But right now, we're looking at numbers, and part of the purpose of limiting clutter, like in our master plan or whatnot, is, how do you do that? How do you support that master plan and that vision without this? That's what I don't understand.
Maybe it can be an independent panel of judges grade something on unsightliness, and if the average score is above seven on the unsightliness, something is done. And it doesn't matter if it's buildings, if it's junk, if it's tools, if it's untrimmed trees, or anything like that.
But we're just talking about buildings right now, because Gary has to support these things. And he has to, Paul has to be able to support and provide some rules to people when they come and ask, and they're saying, "Well, there's no rules, we're just gonna, you know, whoever's on our panel will decide."
So each time somebody comes in for an application to put up a structure, we have to convene a panel of judges to determine whether it's gonna look right or not?
Yeah.
I mean, this is the alternative, this is a simplified alternative to that.
That's only if it's above that number of buildings. Only if it's above that number of buildings. If it's his fourth building, he's allowed five, it can be pink, bright neon pink, and no one cares, and no one can do anything about it.
Well, that's a great point. If you wanna regulate the color, you could put that in here too.
No.
I mean, that's what you're saying.
No, I understand, but because it's not being met head to head, you can never win. You can never enforce it.
We're not gonna win anyhow. Okay, I'm here, TJ has to say.
Go TJ.
Go TJ, you're on.
So we have a couple options. One is to do absolutely nothing, let everyone build whatever they want, wherever they want. Go with some numbers. I was wondering if any, if there's been any experience in communities in sticking strictly with percent of lot coverage combined with already existing rules such as setbacks? And because that is going to self, it's going to limit based on the size of property. The smaller properties are gonna, the setbacks really do limit in the percent of lot coverage.
There was a community that I worked in years ago that did not have a number limit. It was just based on lot coverage. By and large, it was fine. There were a handful of situations where people had, you know, dozens of buildings on their lot, and the neighbors complained about it all the time. There was nothing that I could do as a zoning administrator, because I didn't have a rule to deal with it. So that's what it was. So it didn't proliferate across the community, but there were a handful of examples that I was made aware of that... So there is that example.
Was it unreasonable, was it like extreme craziness?
This is, I mean, from my own personal standpoint, I wouldn't have wanted to look at it next door. It didn't seem to fit with the neighborhood in those particular examples, but, you know... This is ultimately, you know, you all are the arbitrators of this. It's, you know, you have to make a decision about what's reasonable. On the other hand, there's the example that I put in the memo that's kind of an extreme example, where less than 10 acres, you only get one accessory structure. 10 to 15, you get two. I mean, so that's, and I don't know, I don't do the zoning administration in that community, but I don't know that there's a lot... but I don't know that there's a lot of pushback against that either, so... Those, those are the rules that they have in their books, and that's what the community lives with. I've never heard any big pushback against it. But, you know, I think, so there's, those are, I guess, like you said, two extremes. And you could find yourself somewhere in the middle, potentially, on this stuff.
I, I, I'm just gonna suggest that we put some sort of a higher limit on it to be reasonable. I don't know, I was thinking, I moved it up to four, five, six, and seven.
Are we still gonna go under one acre?
Or three, or five, and six, I don't know, I was just, I just thought if it's four, everybody should be able to accommodate most people. Okay, Linda, go ahead.
So the supervisor shared this with us. He isn't gonna say it, but it's a good point, and you need to hear it.
Oh, good.
The majority of the problems that we're talking about with buildings are in the exclusive neighborhoods, with the half million dollar homes and above. So what the township board requires, instead of working everybody over on buildings before these subdivisions can be developed, there are neighborhood associations that ought to have to have a covenant that tells exactly what they can and can't do in that neighborhood. And then when they have a problem, instead of running to us, because we don't enforce those neighborhood association rules, they can go back to their association, and it takes it off the township, period. And they're the people complaining, and so people in Waplem, down there, what's that called, Waplem something comes off the territorial there. I know that because at the board meeting, last board meeting, two people that were here to complain came over and talked to me, and I don't remember what their issue was with their neighbors, but they're from there. There's a guy from Salem Farms that's been out to tell us how terrible it is that his neighborhood doesn't mow its grass correctly. And he's been here at several meetings, and so that's a better way to handle it if we want to address the problem, which is what you guys said. What Mr. Whittaker has said is, it's in these subdivisions, these large parcel subdivisions, that in our zoning ordinance require that their neighborhood association rules deal with these.
The problem is, we've got, I think, that, and the Salem Farms, they don't have an association, correct? Because we talked about this before.
But that's the point, so we can't fix that.
Right.
But going forward, as parcels develop, whether it's here or it's in the USD, that we require that. That these people live closer together.
Yeah.
They're, the other thing is, they're people that have expectations because they're coming out of some other city.
Yeah.
They want more rules, they want more government, they're used to, they want everybody to look the same.
I've heard more government is the answer.
Yeah.
I, I heard that.
Yeah, so to some extent, you have a problem. The best way to handle it is, before anyone else can develop those type of communities, they have to have in their covenant all those rules of what they want to look at. If they want their grass mowed at four inches or three inches, then that's in their covenant. When they don't, when the neighbor's grass is at six inches, they got a neighborhood association, let them handle it instead of us. Instead of penalizing all of the other property owners in Salem Township. Because these people were, and understand, I have a neighbor, a great guy. When he first moved out here, he was livid that South Island didn't have a swimming pool for their high school. My kids grew up swimming in ponds in Salem Township. I grew up swimming in ponds.
And we got the immune system to prove it.
In Salem Township. And my point to him was, hey, look, if you want a pool, why don't you move back where you came from? Because we're pretty happy with ponds here in Salem. Not that there's anything wrong with having a pool at the high school, but again, the point comes, people come out, they're the ones having problems, let someone else deal with it. Give the problem to the appropriate people. Let's stop taking on everybody's problem. That, that's, and that came from, I added a little few words to your supervisor, but that is what Gary was sharing with us, and you needed to hear it.
So thank you, and thank you, Gary. And I, I agree, and we've talked about that, but we still have this issue to deal with. And the issue came up is because somebody had, they're limited as of now to only two buildings when they live on three plus acres. So that's why, that's what we have, that's what we're here to deal with. Can we just, like, off the table? And, and, I mean, I know it's, it's not perfect, but can we at least give these people some relief that have the buildings they want, and they're not out of compliance, and nobody can complain about their four buildings on their one acre or whatnot?
You think it's gonna stop the complaints? That's not gonna stop the complaints!
Bart, we have to deal with an issue, the rules are too tight, we're trying to loosen it.
I agree with that. I am not, I am not disagreeing that the rules are too tight.
I know. No, yes, you are. You're, you're looking for, no, I take that. You're looking for an answer, but you're not addressing the issue. And we keep fighting about, arguing, disagreeing with intensity.
Last meeting, we let out that we were gonna nuke the chart, get it off, take it out.
That's your opinion.
No, we walked out of here saying, this is the general way we're going.
That's right. And when I thought about it, when I thought about it without having any general guidance, and, and in talking to Paul and what goes on in other communities, I wanted to bring it up, so let's...
I know.
And I'm not saying you have to vote for it. If you don't like it, whatever, whatever comes up out of this, but let's just have the discussion, and let's vote on it, and try and loosen up some of these, some of these rules for these people.
I agree to loosening up the rules for everyone.
Okay, but you keep fighting over something with, or arguing, pushing your point with no answer. It is 8:30. We need an answer. We need to find a solution.
Nuke the chart.
Okay, well, then, let's go through the rest of this, and when we, when somebody brings up a motion, everybody votes. That's what we're supposed to do.
Make a motion now, Bart, to do, to do the chart, make a motion. Once it's on the floor, you get one, you get a second.
Daryl, so Kevin, Kevin's answer was, was what? He wanted to increase the numbers?
I think we should increase the numbers, yes.
I keep looking at the house size in the Hamlet. If it's a small framed house, I got a, I got a few more buildings in the backyard. But if it's a larger house, if you can get 30, 3,000 feet, square foot house in here, what kind of, what, what's left of a lot down?
And certainly, it falls, probably may fall under lot coverage. I know I dealt with that with the church, we're looking at...
I look at, it's, you know, these numbers you want to increase, but are you, are we thinking of the house size? I mean, you go out here, and some of these homes are quite, quite large. You know, and then you, and then you say, an acre should have more than three buildings on it, with that big, huge house.
Okay.
I mean, I just, that's my problem.
So what do you think, what do you think it should be? And I was just looking, I, that's why I said, I'm just throwing numbers out there.
I mean, I have two acres, and I think I would. I can't see my neighbors what they have. But I sure as heck wouldn't want to look at a lot of storage sheds out there.
Okay.
If I didn't have the woods.
So what, what do you, what do you think?
For the two acres, what the number down here is fine. I don't see any problem with, I have two acres, and I don't see a problem with three buildings. Three accessory buildings. I have a gazebo, and, and I thought I might like to put up a storage barn. And that would be it. But if you get, of course, I'm restricted too, because I got a storm drain, or the Nelson Drain runs through it at the beginning and, and the back, so I'm cut up in three, three sections. I have to get a permit from the DEQ to, you know, put a drainage, so I could drive across it. So me, three buildings is enough.
So Kevin, you say need to increase, what do you think?
I'm still kind of torn with putting numbers on it and doing lot coverage.
Okay. What do you think?
I just think that we're trying to find a problem for a solution.
Okay, so you're with no chart?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay, I'm for no chart.
Okay.
I'm with a chart, but you gotta be a lot looser, a lot more flexible, it's gotta be more numbers to it. I know that we keep talking every time we get in these meetings, well, what other communities do? What do, I'm not concerned about other communities. I'm here in Salem Township. And I believe that we should definitely raise the number of outbuildings on this chart. So I agree with the chart, but I, I think the number should be up.
Okay, so yeah.
Can I add something?
Just a minute, and you're with no chart.
For right now, sure.
Yes, okay. Yes, ma'am.
As a homeowner here, I think the fact that you put up trees so you don't see your neighbor is what you do when you don't like what your neighbor has outside. I think that's why we live in a great community, where people aren't telling us that we can only have a blue grudge or a green grudge. I think that's exactly why people move here, is because they know they have more freedom. So to have such a small number, I mean, I'm with nuke or raise it like to six on the smallest property, because it's my property, I'm paying for that, so I should be able to have my say. And like, I just got all new neighbors in my little street there in Leota, we're full now, and we're building berms with trees, and so that we don't see our neighbors. That's our choice. I mean, we're spending the money on our trees. So that's, that's how it should be. You should be taking care of your own property. And if I don't like what I see, I can build something.
Next township supervisor, right there.
So the comment was made about these 3,000 square foot homes on small lots. That's not true, with the exception of the homes built behind the plastic decker, which are on larger lots. The average home in the Hamlet, or its footprint is 1,000 square feet or less, because any home that's, that's larger is a two-story home, and you only count the footprint. You don't count the actual square footage of the home. And you can go in, somebody needs to substantiate what I've said. Brian Foyle, who built most of the homes, built 1,200 to 1,400 square foot homes, they are two-story. Again, which means the footprint, so if I'm on a quarter acre, a quarter acre is over 10,000 square feet, I'm using about 10% right now for my home. Because an acre is 43,560 square feet.
Good point, good point. Well, and that's, that's why I was bringing this, I had doubts. And I, and I thought I may, I thought I may have made a mistake. I'm not here to push my agenda, I'm here to bring it all, bring it all up and say, what did we miss? Because I wasn't real comfortable with it yet. So, and if you all are comfortable, and I'm the anomaly, that's cool, let's vote. But I, I think we've brought up some more information that can help us make a better educated decision. That was the purpose of putting this up, so... Let's move forward and go to some of the definitions, the section, accessory structures, and see the changes that Paul made. The only question I had was on the, the, the second page was, could we or should we make accommodations for, like, like temporary structures? And I don't think we have, Paul, we don't have that now, do we? But if somebody's like, and I don't mean with new construction, but say if somebody has a pole barn or, or whatever, and they're, they, they want to pour a new floor, they want to revamp it, it's a summertime project, and they want to haul all the stuff out of their barn, instead of leaving it all out, maybe they might get cargo containers or something, and maybe they want something temporary. Currently, our ordinance does not allow for any kind of temporary accessory structure to store all their stuff.
So based on your direction at the last meeting, there were two changes that we made. One was to make the provision for a temporary structure, like in the form of a tent or something, to be up for a reasonable period of time. So we made that change. We also took the, the number of accessory buildings out, based on this previous discussion and the discussion this evening, it sounds like. And I think what, what you're talking about now, Pam, is having some kind of temporary storage structure, whether that be like a pod, or something like that during, during a period of construction, renovation, something like that, so people have someplace to store their stuff onsite, as opposed to going and taking it to a offsite storage facility.
Yes. And that's not allowed right now, is it?
It would be considered outdoor storage, so if you wanted to allow for, which is not permitted in a residential district. So if you did want to allow for that on a temporary basis, I guess my suggestion would be to state that you would permit it, and maybe state the time period or the circumstances under which you would permit it, so...
The pods are not allowed temporarily on residential property?
I wouldn't say anything. I mean, so as a zoning administrator, if somebody had a pod there and they were clearly, you know, in the process of moving, or they were dealing with, you know, renovation or home construction, we wouldn't say anything. If it sat there for a year, you know, six months or a year, and there clearly wasn't anything going on, and they were just using that as an outdoor storage, then, then it would be regulated as outdoor storage. Currently, that's the way we would do it. Now, we've got the provisions in here for using the cargo containers as a permanent accessory structure.
So we've got to have something written or changing the wording on the pods for temporary...
So if you want to be explicit about it, like I said, currently, my, my approach to it would be is if they're in the middle of a construction project, or, you know, clearly moving or doing something like that, and they have pods sitting in their driveway for a week or so.
So we don't need any...
We wouldn't do anything.
We don't think we did any language on that.
Well, I mean, if it, if it became a problem, I think we would ultimately say something. And I think Pam's point is that it would be better to explicitly say that it's okay on a temporary basis.
Well, I was just asking the question, is it something we need? If we don't need it, then, no, I just wanted to bring it up to everybody, it was just a thought.
No, it's like, no, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, I was thinking more like a long-term project, like, three months, four months.
Well, even a year sometimes, you know, if it's a big project.
Maybe it's, maybe it's, it can be like short-term and then renewed or something like that, I don't know. It was just, I don't want to create any more rules than what we need.
Because some projects fall along.
But what I don't want is our current ordinance to hamper people that are doing something like that.
I have not experienced it as an issue.
Okay. I'd say if it's not wrong, I just have to guess. Nobody's going up there. Well, that's, but... Of course, when someone other issue. Okay, no, that's fine. Other than that, I did not have any other questions. What about greenhouses? So if they're under 200 feet, so if somebody wants a greenhouse on their property, that could be, that's an accessory.
Accessory structure.
Even if it's under 200 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so how, how do we do this, go about, we've got...
So it doesn't sound like there are any proposed changes from the last round of changes, so if you're all ready, somebody...
Well, except for some like the table, and, and some don't, but we don't have, we don't have set on a, on a number. So should we, like, have some sort of discussion on a reasonable number, and then people can vote either yes or no? If they don't like the table, then...
So what, what you typically do is, somebody would make a motion, either to recommend approval of the language for adoption by the township board, or they could make a motion for approval for recommendation, recommendation of adoption with proposed changes, if you were gonna perhaps add this table back. Or you could make a motion to postpone action, direct us to make a change, and then bring it back to you to discuss it.
I don't want them just coming back again. I think we're just there.
I'd like to just ask a couple questions about the whole cargo container that...
Yeah.
What's with cargo containers?
Is that a question?
I mean, what, I mean, why, you can put a pole barn in front of whatever with, in front of a line, with, with permission, you know, with a, with a change, or, but you can't put a cargo container. Why, 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 what's, what's the big deal with cargo containers, people?
Mr. Supervisor, do you have anything to add to that?
What's the deal with, what's the deal with cargo containers?
I think because they're, they're not allowed currently, right? They're not allowed?
So the first thing we had an incident where they did bring in some shipping containers, I think Paul, you worked on it for me, where it became a real issue with the neighbors. Basically, is the foundation underneath it? Like, they would, they, they, so they literally brought a plan into us, where they put a foundation underneath it and built a roof, to make it cosmetically look good to the neighbors that, that, you know. I, I just think bringing cargo containers in somebody's backyard is gonna be an issue with the residents.
containers in somebody's backyard is going to be an issue with the residents. I mean, again, I, I understand it just, you know, somebody has a couple acres and they put, what, half a million dollars into their property and it, you know, they landscape it, and then someone just dumps, comes in and dumps a cargo container in next to it? There needs to be some.
Why a cargo container? If I put, if I built a pole barn, Gary, that looks a pole barn, wooden building, and then put steel siding on it that made it look just like a cargo container, put a flat roof on it that made it look just like a cargo container, but it wasn't a cargo container?
Wealth in my world.
No, I, I understand, but cargo container, people like the darn things because they're $1,200 plus probably about $800 delivery. And you get instant, secure, weatherproof storage. It is a great solution. There's people building residences out of cargo containers.
And restaurants.
And restaurants and food, I mean.
They're, they're going in all over the town.
They're becoming vogue.
You know, they're going in as we speak.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, I sat next to a guy at a restaurant in the airport, and, and, and they took me through all these things that they're doing in the way of cargo container homes. And they put them together like Lego bricks in zero gravity. And people are loving these things. It's, it's like this whole green, you know, recycle reuse movement, and they last forever. And, you know, it's.
The expensive communities, it's not happening in the expensive communities. You know, it's happening more on the outskirts.
I know, but you can go in like where your son lives in Homestead.
Yeah.
And decide you're going to bring in one of the large cargo contain, what, wait, but it, it happens.
It's happened there. There's a whole bunch of them.
I'm saying, people are not, you know, they, they, they don't want to see that. So it's something that we have to deal with.
That's, that's what I was trying to explain last month, is we're coming up with all these finite rules. And yet, when you go out into township, it's nothing like that. And if somebody new comes in the community and we say, you got to follow these rules, and they drive around and they see what people that are already here are doing, then there's a real discrepancy there. And some people are going to have heartburn.
I, I know, but in our ordinance, as they'll talk about, like, you can't park a camper trailer in front of your driveway. And that subdivision or that development over there. Well, that's what it says. I, I haven't heard of such a thing. But that's what it is. You either have a target in your backyard.
So you're saying put the language in?
I'm just saying, this is what we have to deal with on a daily basis. A guy calls and he doesn't want to see this camper in the guy's front lawn, whatever, or in the driveway. And I'm like, really? So it's either, our language says it's got to be on the side or it's got to be in the back.
People have been moving out here for more freedom. It's, they're, because the communities they're coming from won't let them do the things they want to do. We just had people come here that want to expand the business portion of their house. We know what that's all about. There's some rules changed on what you can grow and what you can do and all that kind of stuff, okay? It, they, they, why are they coming here? Because they won't get as much pushback on it.
I really don't think I'm supposed to talk, but anyway, I'm going to say one more thing and I'll shut it down. But I, one example is the property on Curry Road. And I, I know the lady, and anyway, they had a business, just like, I think you said, Pam, they shut it down. They got shut down in Westland or Garden City. They got shut down because of what they were doing. Well, I got this couple acres over here. They're perfectly brought seed containers. They brought all this stuff and everything and stored it there. And it just, and here's a, right across the street is a beautiful house that people invested a lot of money. And it, it just, I mean, pallets, I mean, they accused me of having a pallet shop over there. There were pallets all over. And I, I just, it really becomes an ice cream. And it's something, but they, thank God, right, Paul? They are very cooperative. And they got it cleaned up for us. And, and I don't know, I just think there's got to be some rules in there.
That's what we're just trying to balance.
Just, just let it go.
All right. Kevin, what are, what are your recommendations for the number of accessory buildings? And we're going to decide, just see what everybody says. Bob, think of yours or?
Yep.
Bert, Bob, do you have numbers? Are you ready to go? What do you think?
Under one acre, four. One to two acres, five. Two to five acres, six. Five to 10 acres, 10. If they want any more than that, then they have to go to the ZBA.
And we're sitting, they're still adhering to the 10% current.
And/or, okay, the lot coverage.
The lot coverage. So do you think 10 would jive with that, 10, the lot coverage? Or is it going to create a problem because not that much more buildings?
On the five to 10 acres?
Okay. Okay, Kevin, what do you say?
I agree with that number.
Same as Bob. Okay. And you don't have to agree with the table. If you want a ditch table, that's fine. Just say you're not going with the table. What do you think?
I agree with about some.
Okay.
But this table is more just like a guideline, correct?
No, this will, this will be the rule. This will be the rule. So I think what he's doing is he's padding it so people don't have to go to the ZBA. But what you run into, the, the impact of that is going to be, there will be, there could potentially be more buildings, but it gives people more freedom and flexibility. But, you know, whatever. Okay, you get it.
Yeah.
And Gerald, you, you, you like the numbers the way they are?
Yeah. I'm going with it.
Oh, you're going with Bob's or you're going with Paul's? The original?
The increased one from Bob.
Oh, okay. Okay. TJ, what do you think? Are you with the table?
I'm okay with increased numbers.
You're with increased?
But, yeah, lot coverage is that?
That would be part of it.
In effect, that's in effect of all of it. So someone with a one acre lot or, you know, half an acre lot who says, well, now I get to build four buildings.
Maybe not.
And they're all going to be, you know, it's going to take up.
Their four accessory.
90% of the property.
Assuming this is what you adopt.
It has to be the percentage.
Four accessory structures.
It's percentage.
Within, okay.
The percentage for, for smaller lots.
I think it's a little variance.
Yeah. As long as there's some percentage of lot coverage in those, then others. Okay.
I agree. I agree.
I mean, I.
Percentage of building size with a lot.
I mean, I had to go before the ZBA on 10 and a half acres to put in a barn, just because of all these different protecting wetlands and a gas line and all this stuff that we had to work with. It was hard to find a spot on 10 acres. So I just.
Okay. So we have. Bart?
Got one acre, you got four buildings.
Are you with the table or no?
No.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
If you got one acre, you're allowed to have four. If you have 10 acres, you're allowed to have 10. Think on that. Think on that. A doghouse is an accessory building. You got a guide?
It's not.
It's not an accessory building.
It's not, it's not.
I think 10 is too high, but since everybody's gone with that, then.
Of course, 10 is too high when you go by the percentage.
Okay.
You know?
Okay.
We didn't.
And setbacks.
Okay. And there's some, and there's screening and things, right? Screening, there's screening in here somewhere, setbacks.
Setbacks definitely required.
Buildings in front of their house.
Screening is not.
All right, okay. All right, let's move on. Do we have a motion?
We got, we got to have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion.
So if you wanted to make a motion to recommend adoption with the proposed change that you just made with the chart, you could simply stating, recommend approval to the township board with the condition that we update the.
Update the chart to, you've got, you've got the numbers. I got them too.
Yep.
Before we get to, did anybody have any other questions on all the language that's in here?
I can go back to cargo containers and, if cargo containers are stacked and they're still below the height of, a maximum height of a building.
No, no stacking.
Why?
Paul said so.
Why? I have, I have a max height of a pole barn I can put up. I want to stack two cargo containers and I can't do it. And if, even if it's under that max height, what's wrong with just max height of any accessory building? Fall into that. Why do we, why can't we stack a cargo container? I'm not trying to stack cargo containers. I understand. I'm playing devil's advocate here. It's just, what are we trying to?
The language for this was developed based on an aesthetic issue.
Based on an aesthetic issue?
Yes.
So, and if we're, I know, I'm beating the dead horse, guys. I, I understand. And, and so, so we're not going to have any aesthetic issues if there's one cargo container per, but as soon as you stack them, that, that would be, that goes beyond the measurable, unreasonable level. And then all of a sudden, any complaints.
That's, that's what the.
Theory is.
Not what the theory is, what the, what the experiences told us.
I don't have any experience. Nor have they given any data.
I don't, I don't know that I have any data, but I do know that.
How else do we make decisions if it's not on data?
Based on the experiences and, and, based on the complaints. These are suggestions. This is your language.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
We have Bruce had a question.
I have a question. Just keep in mind, stacking cargo containers require additions to your building code, you know, you have to put a skirt there so we don't have those little pockets, little corrugated where you got animals living in there, things like that. So you'd have to do some revisions in your building code, whatever for that. I don't know if it's in the building code, how to stack containers safely and all that stuff. And who's welding them and how you make them so you don't get bumped by the tractor and fall and crush a kid. I'm sorry, but I don't want to be crushing kids with cargo containers. I don't want animals living in there that are going to start infesting anybody else's yard. And I don't know if we have, if it's even in the building code and how to do that correctly. So it's simple to put them on the ground and on concrete with a rat wall or wherever it is. That's already in the building code, how to build a slab to put a structure on. But I don't know about stacking safely.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Oh, okay, good.
I make a motion that we accept the accessory building ordinance language that's been submitted by the planner, and that the table be updated to the new number suggested and, and that this be submitted to the board for approval.
Okay. Mr. Secretary. Oh, and who was the second on that?
Me.
Mr. Secretaries, we need a little more personal.
Is it up for discussion?
Oh, sorry.
First and second, it's up for discussion.
Yes. Bart, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, probably all, all night on this. Somebody explained to me, and maybe Bob, you know, pushing the corner.
Yeah, I can. I got those skills. Go ahead.
Five to 10 acres is 10. So the guy sitting here with five acres says, I can put up 10, 10 buildings. And the guy with 10 acres says, I can only put up the same amount as him.
Unless he wants to get a variance.
Unless he wants to go and pay and, and, and come before and get a variance. He says, I can split my property, split my property, put five more up there and have five here.
I have one too.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Should we change the five to 10 acres?
I, if you're going to do anything, just make it a sliding scale that goes with the acreage. Got this many acres, multiply it times this. That's how many buildings. Round up, round down. But you're going to get the people that moved here to have these wide-open spaces to live in a farming community that's going to look at this scale and see it decreasing in rate as it goes up. And they're going to go, are you kidding me?
So are you saying on this five to 10 acres, we need to add?
Well, well, you know, I'm, I'm, it's not, if you're just trying to put something on there to be reasonable, how, how unreasonable persons, let's just put it out there. Guy's got perfectly square 10 acre plot. How many accessory buildings could that guy put in there before his neighbors, who are probably 300, 400 feet away, are going to start whining and say, oh, I don't like what I see on this guy's property? Is it, is it, is it really 10? Do you, can you really sit there and say 10 is really getting close to that edge where we're going to really upset that neighbor? For that guy that's on five or 10?
Pam, would it be better to break up that five to 10 acres?
If, if you're going to do anything that makes any sort of sense, that at least comes back to something that you can justify without all this subjective stuff, is, is making it, make it a sliding scale. Just a multiplier.
People don't have 10 acres to put more buildings though. They normally have 10 acres because they either want the privacy or they want to do some farming or things like that. And I think if we ask Paul, most of the communities, the people that have big lots compared to people that have the little lots, don't put up a hell of a lot more buildings. Okay? They put up the buildings that they need to conduct their business with their property, and that's it. They're not going, well, I got 10 acres. I'm going to put up 10 more buildings. You know, they just don't do that.
So, so the reason that I picked those denominations was based on your zoning districts. So, so those, those differences, the five to 10, 10 and greater, those are based on, you know, the agricultural residential zoning district has a minimum, minimum size of two acres. The estate residential has a minimum size of five acres. And the recreation conservation has a minimum size of 10. So that's, that's where those denominations came from. They weren't arbitrary. It was. Sure, sure. No, I understand. And that's the way the zoning word sets up the distinctions between the types of zoning parcels that allow residential. So that's, that's where that came from.
Totally legit. Understood.
I have a question. So on this chart, you have one to two and two to five. So does there need to be something that says like greater than two? Because think, oh, well, which two acre, you know, or is that already established because it's in the, in the zoning district? Do you see what I'm saying?
So.
Under lot size?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could say one to 1.9 or 1.999 and then two to, I mean, we, we could add the finite there. Over two, I guess it would be over two to five.
Oh, yes, Linda.
So a, a couple of things here. The first thing is, there seems to be a mindset in the room, the more land you have, except for Dan, the more buildings you're going to build. We've left a key component out of this discussion. Buildings cost money. So kind of look at it this way. You're talking about somebody building 10 buildings. Let's say an average pole barn costs $40,000, which is probably on the low side today. So you're talking about a half million dollars of buildings. If I'm going to build a half million dollars of buildings, I'm probably going to build a really nice building for a half million dollars, not 10 little buildings. Where you ought to be concerned is not, is somebody on 10 acres going to put 10 buildings? The bigger concern should be, is somebody on 10 acres going to have 10 cargo containers? That's a bigger concern because I think Bart said those cargo containers, you could pick them up for about $1,200. That's a whole lot more feasible for $12,000 on 10 acres than a half million dollars in pole barns. And I think that when you, you have these discussions, because Dan was pointing on, he just didn't flesh out why. That monetary value is self-limiting. And, and I've mentioned to you before when we talked about fences, farmers don't put up a high fence if we can get away with a lower fence because there's a cost involved. And it's going to be the same thing with your buildings. So I think that, don't worry about 10, 10 pole barns, but worry about 10 cargo containers.
Because once again, we think cargo containers are.
Ugly.
Demon spawn in a pole barn is the most beautiful thing in the world.
Industrial district, put 10 cargo containers on, on 10 acres and see what the people say about that. That, you know, people are not going to.
I don't, I think some people, somebody said they move out here for the freedom. I, I agree with that. I think the majority of people move out here for the aesthetics of open spaces, the agricultural community. That's what our whole master plan is about. That's what everybody talks about all the time. Yes, we do go for freedom. After our meeting, when I called Paul and told him I had buyer's, buyer's remorse, and Linda, thank you for bringing that up, because I said, I'm not worried about the buildings. Because in our last discussion, the buildings weren't really the issue. And that's why we didn't go with Because in our last discussion, the buildings weren't really the issue and that's why we didn't go with the chart. But I had concerns in, in our discussion about the cargo containers. And that's what brought me back to the table. So that being said.
So that is, that is getting closer to fighting the battle where it lives.
But that's only mine. I don't, you didn't want a chart. You don't want any charts.
Guess what? I moved out here so I could do my own thing.
I moved out here for the beauty.
You know, I, I mean, it's just, and, but, you know, and once again, I'll sit there and say, I've got a neighbor that's got a whole ton of junk piled right up against the fence. Oh, well.
That being said.
Oh, well.
And, and so I totally lost that point about the cargo container. So thank you. Is ten, is, is, is ten too, is ten too much? Because you're right, we're not probably going to see buildings. Or do you still think that's fine?
Linda brought up a great thing, a great point about the cost and everything. But if you can only afford, you eventually, you need so, you're looking to have so much storage, X amount of square feet of covered storage, but you can only afford a few thousand dollars here and a few thousand dollars there. You can't make the forty thousand dollar, you know, thirty by forty, twelve foot break pole barn payment. And you're going to put up a storage shed at a time.
Yeah, or a cargo container.
You know.
So the, the regulations behind the cargo containers do have additional screening requirements and that kind of thing. So that may.
That may help.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you've got a, you've got a motion on the table.
You've got a motion on the table, huh? Yeah, well. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Can we talk about that screening, please? Of section sixteen methods of screening.
What do you want to talk about?
Well, that, that number five cargo containers are completely screened from view of budding properties and are rights away by fences or vegetated screens that meets through apartments.
Second page, number five, C five. Okay. Um, what would you like to discuss?
A pole barn doesn't have to be screened. A fishing shanty doesn't have to be screened. A pool house doesn't have to be screened. A gazebo doesn't have to be screened. A cargo container does. Screened from view of a.
I'm okay with that.
Guys, we should keep on coming back to aesthetics of the way other people see your property. And yet, we, we, we address it in these tiny little incremental things that kind of just dance around it.
But, you know, cargo containers aren't aesthetic issue all in itself. And I think most people recognize that cargo containers are an aesthetic issue. They don't look very nice. And most people don't like having a yard full of cargo containers next door to them. So if they, if they, if, if, if a remedy is to screen them, you don't need to screen a pole barn. They're beautiful.
Wow.
And so, you know, or, or, you know, a, a pool house or, you know, those are, those, you know, but a cargo container is, is an aesthetic issue.
All right.
And there's people buying cargo containers and building their primary residence out of them.
Okay, I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to do something here. All right. Do you think cargo containers should be screened? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin?
Absolutely.
Yes. I mean, yes, yes, yes. Okay, any more discussion?
Sure. Can I put a siding on my cargo container so it looks just like a pole barn?
You could spend as much money as you want.
And then not paint the screen?
Yes. I guess. I don't know.
Could I, could I put a, could I put a secret street siding on my cargo container?
All right, we're going to, is there any more discussion?
And put a shegel roof over my cargo container that I don't have to screen it? You could put a dingel.
TJ's going to lose her mind. Okay.
Let's move on.
I'll make it.
Let's move on.
Okay, can I just answer a real quick question? Yeah. TJ's got a question. Just a real quick question on the cargo container issue.
Yes.
If someone bought a bunch and they're going to put them up, aren't there distance requirements?
Between them?
Yes.
I don't believe that there, there are building requirement distances between buildings.
Between buildings.
Between buildings.
Yes.
So the answer to your question is, the language does not say that that takes the place of screening.
Right, yeah, no, I.
There is a provision in the ordinance to allow for non-traditional single-family homes. So there have been people who have proposed to build them out of non-traditional kind of materials like cargo containers put together. It does have to meet the two thousand fifteen built-in code requirements. And then there are additional provisions in the ordinance that says that it has to be setback, it has to be screened if it doesn't fit in with the traditional.
But I mean, if someone buys ten.
I think once a set next to each other.
Do you have a big, long row with five feet in between?
If they're meeting these, based on this.
Based on other ordinances on accessory structures and distance, you know, any kind of.
So the.
Do we have a.
We don't have separation requirements in zoning ordinance. I believe there are separation requirements in the building code.
Okay, okay. So they're with you, so.
Up for the motion.
Restriction. Okay. Any more discussion? Go ahead, Barney. We haven't heard from you at all.
In fact, we're talking about all the beautiful houses that they build out of cargo containers. How all the modern people, we see them off the grid houses. We see two, I've seen through the television at least two different two-story houses that have five bedrooms in them out of nothing but cargo containers. So if you people would quit saying cargo containers are such junky things because beauty is in the eye of the beholder. Besides, I could put a cargo container on my place and I didn't tell you, you had to stare at it. And if you think it's awful, that's fine, but you can't tell me that it looks awful if I think it looks good. And so you're, you're talking about pure aesthetics. You, one of you said, they look awful. Another one of you said, I don't want to look at that. We just passed a big lighting thing here that said, you can't put, your light can't come across your property line and shine in somebody else's house. They had to have special, different lights. So why can't I put something on there and you can't look at it? It's my property. You're getting into the weeds of, this is black and that's yellow, and I don't like a yellow one, and that's green, and who likes green? You're, you're getting into too much of this picky, picky about, it might be look a little rusty. It might be beautiful and painted with psychedelic signs on it, but I might like psychedelic signs just because you don't. So you're, you're getting too much into it.
I agree a hundred percent. Any other discussion?
Off the motion.
All right.
Tam, I got it. Yeah, you say you agree a hundred percent, but we're voting on the, on the print, not just the chart, right?
No, we are, we are voting on the print and the chart together as one package.
Right. So you're saying you agree with Barney a hundred percent about beauty and eye of the holder, but now.
I, yes, I, I, I do agree with that and I do agree with, we're getting into the weeds. But we have a motion in front of us and I'm ready to vote on it.
So screening a cargo container for the sole reason that there's opinions out there that cargo containers are unsightly is okey-dokey fine.
We're going to vote on that.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
That's what we're going to vote on.
That's fine.
Okay.
You ready?
Any more discussion? We're good?
I, I think we need to talk about this more before we, before we pass this. I, I, I don't, I don't think this is.
It's just going to.
Because this type of thing is just going to continue to repeat until we get to something where it becomes adjudged by aesthetics.
Roll Paul Volcker.
Pam Merler?
Yes.
Daniel Vega?
Or Gary.
Or Gary.
Yes.
I'm sorry if I butcher your name.
Sorry.
It's your first day.
He's a secretary, he's never heard anybody's name.
Been lucky.
TJ McCollum?
Yes.
Kevin Frost, yes. Daniel Lewankowski?
Carol Lewankowski.
Daryl?
Yes.
Bart Kahn?
Kahn, you know, guys, I, I think this is record-setting. I think this is the first time I've ever not really agreed and I, I, I just have to vote no this time.
It's okay.
Robert Rizzo?
Yes. How many years have I been sitting up here?
A number.
Fifteen, sixteen, eighteen?
No.
I don't know.
Long enough, you should have been secretary a long time ago.
Oh, no, consistency pays off. Guys, this is. Until we address it, where we need to address it, this is going to continue.
We're going to go continue to number ten, report of correspondence of commissioners and correspondents.
You are so good at wrangling those back and God love you.
Board of trustee.
A new member of the planning commission.
Baptism by fire, Kevin Frost.
Yes.
Thank you for stepping up to the podium.
First meeting for you.
He did fabulous. ZBA.
Uh, nothing to report.
Land preser, oh, we don't have land preservation.
Oh, excuse me, we have two. Kelo and, I can't remember the second one. All the setbacks. I can't even remember. Oh, the north territor, uh, north territorial project. Uh, they wanted to put an addition on the side of the house and it was going into the setbacks and it wasn't approved.
No.
No. So it was just the two items, Kelo for the corner lot there on the curve here, Pearl and, uh, they wanted a variance for that.
Was that approved?
Yes.
Is that a reluctant approval? I've heard you say that today. Okay. Land preservation, conservation, or anything to contribute? Or you want to save it for the public?
No, nothing happened of action in the last meeting and the next meeting is tomorrow night.
Nothing there. We'll have to figure that out for our agenda.
I mean, he can, not being a member of the board, can still.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, plan, consult, review.
Uh, so as far as the monthly report, um, there were half dozen billing permits for, um, dextrin ground pools, um, a number of electrical plumbing permits, no new buildings. And there have been no new proposals in terms of large logistics.
Any issues in regards to complaints of other ordinances besides lighting or sheds that we need to deal with or anything coming in consistently you've seen throughout the year or so?
Uh, there have not been a lot of complaints. It's, it's, it's very low.
Approval of the minutes, May seventeenth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May seventeenth as submitted. Second, the motion.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the minutes for May seventeen, twenty twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, none? Public comment. Ms. Hamilton.
Yeah, as much that our, our governor and our president have said that we're going to do away with combustion engines and vehicles and we're going to go to electric. I want to know, in our zoning ordinance, are we going to deal with that? Because if you look at the amount of charging stations that are going to be necessary, should this become a reality? It's not like a gas station where I go in and I pump. And by the way, I get my gas at Kroger. I buy all thirty-five gallons because I get a dollar off. And, okay, so that takes a little bit of time, but I still move my car, another vehicle's able to come in. I don't think our zoning ordinance is prepared should somebody want to build a station for electric cars. And I think again, so that you guys stay on top of things, it's something I think that Paul should be bringing to you is some things that we should consider down the road when somebody wants to put one of those somewhere in San Antonio Township between Ann Arbor and South Lion. Thank you.
Um, anyone else? Chairperson comment? I'm going to yield the day on here.
The thing about our electric grid for the whole country cannot support a bunch of electric tires. Of course, it can't support what we've got going now. We've got Texas shutting down. You got California shutting down their grids for periods of time. It's, I worked on the electric car project at Ford Motor Company years ago, okay? And it, there are so many obstacles and it's a fallacy that electric cars are good for the environment when everything that create that electric power involves gasoline and oil and ga, gas. And it's just such a fallacy. I think it's a political joke. And I think we're a long ways off before we ever get to electric cars. And like you said, Linda, you go and fill your car up. If you're on a trip and you stop, you fill your car up, ten minutes later, you zoom out. Not four or five hours later. And people aren't going to do that. They aren't going to put up with that. And so in the cities, they might be fine, but they're, but you get out in the midwestern states, they're not possible.
Okay, thank you.
But Dan, to your response, people are buying electric cars. They are leasing electric cars right now. They're maybe not an overwhelming part of the population, but they are doing it.
Mm-hmm. And they're getting a subsidy from the government.
Yes, they are, but the point is that they have to be charged somewhere when they drive them. And I just think, I don't see in our ordinance where we deal with that. And again, I think it's good to be proactive versus reactive.
Adjourned, nine seventeen.